Hi Kaylee, please tell us a bit about yourself and why you're running for county council, along with your two top projected priorities for your first year in office.
Thank you, Robin, so much. Thank you all so much for being with me tonight. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you all. My name is Kaylee Galloway and I am running for Watcom County Council here in District One. And I'm very excited for the opportunity to bring some fresh energy and informed perspective to council. You know, if elected, I'd be the first ever in history under the age of thirty to be elected. And I think that's a really exciting opportunity as we think about our next generation of leadership. You know, this community in Bellingham has been my home for the last decade and, you know, I'm running because I want to serve our community. You know, I want to see more young people get engaged and I also want to empower those around me so that when we're developing policy, we're doing so in an inclusive and community-centered way. I'm a dedicated public servant. I got my start here in Bellingham as a student at Western. I ran on campus as the AS Vice President for Government Affairs. And that's where I got my start in terms of getting to work at all levels of government, working on issues around affordability and accessibility of higher education and rental safety, childcare, and some of the other issues important to our community. Upon graduation, I moved out to Washington DC to work for Senator Maria Cantwell. And about a year and a half into that, had the chance to move back home and work for Congresswoman Susan Del Benet, whereas I was her lead outreach staffer, community liaison for Watcom and Skagit Counties. And so that's when I really got to meet a lot of people in the field and learn a lot about the different issues that we're facing. And I recognized that all of these issues are so interconnected. For about two years now, I've worked for the state legislature as Legislative Assistant to Rep Deborah Lakanoff in the 40th Legislative District. And for about nine months last year, worked for Representative Shoemake concurrently. So, as I like to say, I've had an amazing group of lady elected officials who I've had a chance to work for and learn from. And they've inspired me to really give back to my community. And they've given me the skills and the tools to be an effective leader and policymaker here at home. Two of my issues that I'm very impassioned about, the first would be affordable housing issues. I really do believe this is probably the number one biggest issue here in our community. It's also the issue we hear most about at the doors. And I think for housing, you really need to think about it very comprehensively. Unfortunately, I wish there was a silver bullet answer for housing, but I don't think that there is. And so I'm looking forward for an opportunity for the county council to step up and be far more proactive in the way we address housing issues. The second issue I would say is around combating climate change and protecting our environment and natural resources. I've been a member on the Watcom County Climate Impact Advisory Committee for the last year and a half or two years, working on updating our climate action plan. So really excited to see some of those actions and strategies come to fruition, including the development of an Office of Climate Action. So with that, I bet my time's almost up. Thank you. I will leave it there and we'll get into more issues along the way.
It's a good segue because the next question's about climate change. The landmark report by the UN Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change says "We have about a dozen years left to change the course of environmental degradation." Tell us specific ways that you will bring together disparate groups in the county, such as environmentalists and Cherry Point workers, in addressing the long-term future of Cherry Point Industries while also addressing the climate change issues pressing on us. Please include the types of industries that you would encourage to locate at Cherry Point.
Thank you so much for asking this question. You know, I am incredibly passionate about finding ways for us to address climate change. And the way I think about it, quite frankly, is very much in line with the way in which we've organized it in the Climate Action Plan, which is really considering both the built and natural environments. And so for me, when it comes to the built environment, I am thinking about how are we decarbonizing our buildings? And that can be business, commercial industry, but that can also be homes. And that can be retrofits to old structures, or that could be when developing new. I'm also thinking very closely around our infrastructure, right? So for me, infrastructure could be renewable energy sources and modernizing our grid and the way that we transmit, distribute, and store our energy. It can also include broadband, which is heavily needed. And the reason I see it so interconnected with climate is because if we can reduce our vehicle miles traveled by single occupancy vehicles by continuing to work from home or do school from home, receive healthcare from home, we're reducing our transportation-related emissions. But infrastructure can also be removing culverts, which can help with fish passage. It can also be in ensuring our infrastructure's climate resilient so that when we are experiencing weather patterns, that our infrastructure will hold up. On the flip side of that is our natural environment. And so we need to be thinking about, one, how are we preserving and protecting our viable working lands here in Watcom County? That, you know, agriculture and forestry, aside from having economic value and cultural value, also has carbon sequestration value. And that goes to say as well with just in general, our wild habitats and wetlands, riparian areas are all very important that we preserve and protect and restore. Closely connected as well as water resource management, ensuring we are addressing water rights and making sure we have good quality and quantity as we continue to move forward. It also includes ecosystems and salmon recovery and making sure we're doing what we can to recover our salmon populations. So I see climate change as being all-inclusive in how we address it. When it comes to Cherry Point, I think we've gone a long way when it comes to the amendments to the comprehensive plan. I'm quite excited to see the future of Cherry Point. I think there's a lot of potential as we think about our next generation workforce, our next generation economy here in Watcom County. I do see Cherry Point as an economic backbone. And so I want to make sure that we're also continuing to support industry out in Cherry Point and would definitely be committed to working with our tribes, our industry, our labor, and bringing together county government with our state and federal governments as we continue to support workers and the environment out at Cherry Point. But I think there's a lot of economic development opportunities. And so I'm excited to engage what, again, a new clean energy, clean tech industry could look like out there. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Kaylee. All right, a different topic, homelessness. The number of homeless children and adults continues to increase as identified by groups such as Watcom County, the Interfaith Coalition, Family Promise, and School Districts. Bellingham City and Watcom County residents identify as one of the top three local issues to address. Describe three or four specific ways that you'll use the resources and powers of the county council to address some of our homelessness needs.
Yeah, I mean, as a resident of somebody, you know, who lives downtown, I absolutely witness our rise in our houseless population firsthand. And it's been absolutely devastating to our community and to our houseless and vulnerable individuals. And so I definitely see this as being a top priority. I think first and foremost, as mentioned, I believe the county council really does need to take a far more proactive approach in the way we're addressing housing and homelessness issues. And I really do see them as interconnected because I think the number one solution to addressing homelessness is by ensuring a housing-first model and building more affordable and permanent supportive housing opportunities. So I think, you know, the county takes a good first step in the offering of shelters, but I think that's just the tip of the iceberg when it comes to addressing the full spectrum of housing issues. I recently had the opportunity to tour Garden View, the tiny permanent, or the, I should say, the transitional supportive tiny home community out near Wilburn. And I think that's a great example of a model that could be really successful for folks as we are focusing on a housing-first model. But we're also coming with that, bringing resources to the community, having caseworkers on site who can help those residents with their with their health goals, their education goals, their workforce goals, and support them as they continue to look for permanent housing. So I think one specific way the county can step up is just in funding these sorts of projects. And so that would be my first specific target. But in order to fund those projects, we need to have the revenue to do so. And so my second idea would be to explore what it would look like to develop a housing levy model, just like the city of Bellingham has the Home Fund, and finding ways for us to dedicate progressive and sustainable revenue sources to these projects. My third idea would be around the development of a local improvement district, which would allow the county to step up in the acquisition of land in effort to, one, support our nonprofit housing developers in land acquisition, which tends to be very difficult for some of them. But it would also allow for us to keep that housing permanently affordable by using a land bank or community land trust-type model. So I'm really excited for that. The fourth idea that I would have is around zoning and land use policy, really thinking about how we can continue to increase our density within our development so that we're not negatively harming or impacting our environment as we develop. I think we need to work very closely with the Growth Management Act and growing within our urban growth areas. And one way we can do that is actually in the way we think about our comprehensive plan. And so while it's not entirely related to homelessness, but in terms of just thinking about the 2025 comprehensive plan, just really thinking about how we can not only better incorporate equity, but housing and climate change and salmon recovery and some of these other priorities our counties should set forth. So there's a lot to do when it comes to addressing housing insecurity and homelessness. And I'm really excited to step up and get to work on it.
Great. Those are great ideas, Kaylee. Another track off issues, your platform largely parallels that of your opponent without saying anything negative about Eddie. You know, that you have dedicated yourself not to run a negative campaign. What is your, what makes you the better person for the job?
Yeah, you know, Eddie and I have a good working relationship. And we've really known each other for almost the last decade since we were both students at Western. And so I appreciate you saying that because it really has been a goal of my campaign to lead with respect and integrity of my opponent. You know, we're really friends running against each other. So I just will share that in good faith. I really think the difference between my opponent and I are the way in which we approach policy. My approach is really rooted in my public service at every single level of government. So I currently volunteer on the Community Development Advisory Board for the city of Bellingham. I volunteer on Watcom County's Climate Impact Advisory Committee. I currently work for the Washington State House of Representatives and before that worked for Congress. And through each of these roles, I've had the opportunity to work with our federally recognized tribes, Lummi and Nuxak, but also tribes across our state. And so I really come at the approach to policy from a very process-oriented way. And part of that is in developing good policy that's rooted in the community. And so I've gotten to work hand in hand, for example, with Representative Lakanoff. As we develop policy, for example, HB 1117 around incorporating salmon recovery into the Growth Management Act and our comprehensive plans, you know, we've been developing that policy for the last two years together and really engaging different partners and policy and different experts on the ground, the cities, the counties, environmental groups, and really working together with the tribes and finding the best way we can go about this particular policy. So again, my approach is rooted in that, but it's also rooted in pragmatism. I'm somebody who sees progress as our aspiration. And how we get there is by taking thoughtful and strategic steps. And so I'm very grounded in the way in which I think about progress. And I do believe we need to continue to consult our subject matter experts in the field as we move forward in promoting policy that best fits our community's needs. Other than that, I think the other thing I might say is just in terms of my professional and academic backgrounds rooted in my ability to approach issues from a very multidisciplinary way. You know, so in undergrad, I studied politics, philosophy, and economics with minors in energy policy and law diversity and justice. And I hold my masters in policy studies. And of course, working in all the different levels, I've gotten to interface with all the different issues. And so the way in which I approach our challenges in our community are from a very interdisciplinary and multidisciplinary place. Last but definitely not least, I think my experience will enable me to leverage my relationships at all levels of government and continue to leverage our resources at every level as we work together to address some of these big challenges. So all in all, I think I'm the best for the job and I hope to earn the support of the voters in November.
Thanks, Kaylee. Back to a few more issue questions. This is about Watcom County water issues. What do you see as the best way forward for the county on water quality and access for our various constituent groups, the Farmers Lummi and Nuxak tribes, small cities in Bellingham, especially given the climate decrease and change in the snowpack and predicted increase of our county's population up to seventy thousand new residents by 2036?
You know, I always like to reflect upon a story. You know, when I had first started for Congresswoman Del Benet, I was just maybe a couple months into the job and it was all pretty overwhelming still. And so I kind of said, we were driving in the car up to Watcom County and I kind of said, "Oh my gosh, you know, where do I even start?" You know, she kind of smiled and paused and said, "Water." I'm probably going to learn what that means in a little bit. From that moment on, I've really spent the last seven years learning very intimately about the water resource issues that our communities face and recognizing that the water issues we face in Watcom County look very different than the water issues that we face in the Skagit, which look very different than the issues across the state. So recognizing each community is very unique in the way we need to address water issues. You know, when I've historically attended, you know, the small city partnership meetings where we bring all the small city mayors together and representatives from the county and city of Bellingham, you know, water frequently came up. And it was my understanding that a lot of the folks were trying to resolve water, but they just weren't quite getting through to where they needed to be to make significant policy change. And so that's why there was a big movement in the state legislature this last session to support the Nuxak adjudication process, which I do support because I believe it's a legal framework that will set forth a system of accountability to ensure that all partners, as you've mentioned, the city, the county, the tribes, agriculture, and other municipal water users and others can come together in good faith and negotiate and take an inventory of water rights for our community. Right now, we don't have a good sense of how much we have or who's using or how much because a lot of our water users are actually doing so illegally. And I think this is a really important step as we honor and uphold our tribal treaty rights and their senior water right. So I really do believe water is an important issue, so resolving water rights. But I also think water is our way of life. So thinking about our drinking water at Lake Watcom, thinking about how water flows and how we're creating resiliency in our climate and in our environment here, thinking about future flood predictions and how we're managing rising sea levels and ocean acidification, how we're managing our shellfish industries and our salmon populations. So water is so much, it's so much of what we do and it sustains our economies and our livelihoods and our health and wellbeing and our cultural values and resources here. So I'm not sure if that answered all your questions or not, but there's a lot to do. And I think the county really does need to step up and make sure that we are upholding our tribal treaty rights in good faith. And I hope that as a county councilwoman, I would get to have a pretty proactive role in that process. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's a big question. Onto another one, affordable housing. Which are the stakeholder groups that you will bring together to address the county's housing crisis for low and middle-income families? And what will be your highest priority strategies for this problem?
I want to make sure that I don't forget anyone, so be patient with me. I want to commend our housing partners in our community. I've met with a lot of them. Matter of fact, several of them attended my housing roundtable last week. And we had some phenomenal conversations around how we're addressing affordable housing. And so like I said, I see affordable housing across the spectrum. So maybe join me on this, the journey, and I can kind of go through some of my thoughts. I think when it comes to providing shelters and doing kind of the boots-on-the-ground outreach to our most vulnerable populations, I've been really impressed with the work of Lighthouse Mission. I really do believe that they meet people where they're at and they really center their work around compassion and whole human health and wellbeing. And when it comes to the, you know, tiny home communities, I've really seen homes now step up. And of course, the new Garden View program, which is Road to Home and the Low Income Housing Institute. Is that right, Michael? They've really developed some very positive models. When it comes to the permanent supportive housing opportunities, we've seen very, very successful models come out of Catholic Community Service and Catholic Housing, Pioneer Human Services and Mercy Housing, and they've got several developments throughout our community here. When it comes to affordable homes, we've seen some phenomenal work from our housing authority or Bellingham, Watcom Housing Authority. When it comes to supporting youth, the Northwest Youth Services. When it comes to women and children, Lydia Place. When it comes to permanent affordable homeownership, I'm really looking to the Watcom-Skagit Housing, looking to Watcom Habitat for Humanity and the Colson Community Land Trust. And so I think, I think I'm not forgetting one, maybe I'm forgetting some folks, I'm so sorry. But those are some of the many housing partners that I would hope to bring together. And I'm really excited for the opportunity, you know, once elected, to host very regular occurring meetings where we bring our housing partners together to actually address how do we get to a functional zero in our community? Because it's entirely possible and we've seen it happen in other cities and other states. And so how can we make sure that we're amplifying those models here at home? And that those models are rooted in equity because I do believe housing inequity is a huge issue and how we're confronting our racist history and our systemic racism in building affordable homes and home equity. So there's a lot of good work going on and I'm excited to bring all those folks together so that we can move forward and find the solutions that work for Watcom.
Great. This continues on your last thought about vulnerable, boy, I can't say this, we're vulnerable groups. A number of Watcom County constituency groups sometimes feel unsafe due to discrimination and/or being targeted. Identify some of these groups and three or four specific ways that you as a council member would seek to extend and expand protections, services, and access to support these groups.
Top question. Um, I think first and foremost, we need to address the very real concerns around safety and injustice of our BIPOC community members. So really focusing on the way in which our law enforcement systems are engaging with our communities of color, I think is really important as we saw some of the work happening at the state legislature, really thinking about how our police can evolve to meet the changing needs of our community and focusing less, you know, my observation, focusing less on punitive approach and more on a restorative approach. And so really thinking about how we can promote diversion programs such as Grace and LEAD, how we're thinking about alternative forms of courts, like mental health court, drug court, youth or teen court, and really thinking about crisis stabilization. I really don't think that homelessness or experiencing of mental health should be criminalized. And so I really support embedding of social workers into our law enforcement and first responding agencies, like the community paramedic model have been really successful. So I know that was a lot wrapped into it, but I really think we have a lot of work to do when it comes to public safety and criminal justice reform. I think some of the other folks, I would think about our youth and especially our youth of color and our LGBT plus Q community. And really thinking about the housing insecure youth. And so really focusing on how can we support and expand the services offered by the Northwest Youth Services, but also thinking about our youth that are here attending college. I think there's a lot of students that come from all over the place, some of which don't have stable family backgrounds. And coming to a new community for a new school, I mean, it's very intimidating and scary. And so just thinking about how we can continue to build bridges between our county council and our college and university and some of the other schools here in our community. And then I would say too, you know, just making sure healthcare remains accessible and inclusive. I just know there's been a pretty systemic attack on women's reproductive healthcare. You know, I joined the rally a couple weekends ago in protest of the, you know, Texas decision. And so really thinking about how we're continuing to support access to healthcare. And that's more than just reproductive healthcare right and supporting a Planned Parenthood, but it's also supporting access to behavioral healthcare and dental care. And so I really think holistically when I think about healthcare. So those would probably be the three of my biggest observations and priorities in some of those areas. Thank you.
Thanks. This is the last question before time for a closing statement. And it's less issue-based, it's about coalition building. A few of the previous questions have asked about what you would do in the future on various issues. For this question, we'd like to know about a specific example where you have brought together a wide array of diverse people and/or groups to accomplish a task. We're not looking for a theoretical answer. Rather, we want to know about a specific time where you brokered a successful partnership or coalition of diverse players.
Yeah, I mean, I do this all the time, working for the state legislature. And I think they did this exact effort last week when I brought together about twenty to twenty-five folks to discuss housing issues in our community. And so, you know, I think, for example, like I said, so last week, bringing together different housing providers, not only our nonprofit, but having representation from people who develop, people who are realtors, you know, different voices in the community that all are passionate about housing. And so bringing together, you know, and bringing together informed community members, you know, we had a retired teacher there who had a different perspective, right? Or, you know, and so that's really around bringing together a coalition of subject matter experts. And that's kind of step one of developing good policy. And those sorts of spaces are very regularly occurring in the state legislature. And quite frankly, I spearheaded a series of roundtables in this legislative session for Representative Lakanoff where we addressed issues around higher education, housing, childcare, public safety, healthcare. There was a whole host of issues. And so from those, bringing together those, of those unique voices, that's where policy is made. So for example, we can bring together a group of climate activists, environmentalists, cities, counties, tribes, public and private sectors, and discuss issues around growth management and how we're thinking about net ecological gain and salmon recovery. So this is something we've done for the last two years in bringing people together. And we're very hopeful that in 2022, the governor will take up 1117 and we'll see it cross the finish line after two hard years of coalition building. But these are the sorts of policy solutions that are going to really bring us to the next generation about the way in which we, we think. We've also got examples around bringing together of folks to discuss. We had a bill passed last year around getting rid of inflammatory inappropriate mascots in schools using native imagery. And we're bringing together school districts and students and tribes and the OSPI and all these different folks. And we were able to get bipartisan support and really across the entire state. But that was really because that due diligence was done at the very beginning. So I've got lots of little examples about how we can bring folks together and really see community-driven policy come to fruition. So yeah, I think, I think I'll stop there.
Great. Kaylee, I can't thank you enough. We all are very grateful that both you and Eddie have stepped up and all the service that you've done and that we know that you'll do in the future, regardless of what happens in this election. So yeah, we just really appreciate it. And I know you're, you're working really hard for all of us and thank you for your time. So here we go, closing statement or reflection. And then we'll have a little bit of time if some of the folks here have questions for you.
Yeah, so thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you all today and answer some very thoughtful and difficult questions. I know this is a unique opportunity in our history to think and rethink the way we approach our governments and the policies in which we consider. And as we continue to address the pandemic and what hopefully a post-pandemic future will look like, there's really an opportunity to prioritize resiliency and recovery in everything we do and really focusing on the spectrum of issues that our community faces, be it around economic development and workforce development, making sure that our infrastructure is built, making sure our childcare is accessible and affordable, addressing food deserts in our community, or if it's around addressing climate change and the built-in natural environments, addressing affordable housing. Or if it's around addressing climate change and the built in natural environments, addressing affordable housing and homelessness crisis. And, and definitely last but not least of, of addressing how we keep our communities safe, and that's all communities that were, community policing models are explored and ways to expand our diversion programs and a restorative justice approach and really focusing on all human health. And that includes the mental health and behavioral health challenges that so many face. So I'm really excited to bring in some fresh energy and that, and really bring together an opportunity to bring our different levels of government together because these issues can't be resolved at just any one level of government in any one small community, right? These are citywide, countywide, statewide, national and international issues. And so really thinking about how the county council can revive its energy and revive its jurisdictional abilities and stretch and stretch the way we think about the county council and really think creatively and boldly on how we address some of these issues. So I'm really excited and eager to start on day one. I have a lot of exciting ideas and will continue to learn throughout my campaign and, and after on how we can get started on day one. And so again, I look forward to the opportunity to answer any remaining questions that you may have. I'm really honored by the support I have received thus far in this process and encourage each and every one of you to visit my website at votekayleygalloway.com to learn a little bit more about my campaign. And I would love to have you all get involved and engaged in our, our remaining three and a half weeks here. So thank you.
Yes, you're getting down to the wire. Thank you so much. I believe perhaps Mary?
Sure.
Do you have a question?
I do. Kaylee, thanks for running. I have a question about broadband and the need for universal access. The port, the PUD, and the city of Bellingham all are developing plans for universal access to broadband. And how do you foresee the path it's going forward on this?
Yeah, I mean, I think first and foremost, our path needs to be coordinated. We need to ensure that we're all working in synergy so that we are not stepping on each other's toes. I, I am very committed to seeing broadband, municipal owned broadband specifically expanded in our community. And I believe promoting policies like dig once and open access are going to be some of the ways in which we expand our access to quality and affordable broadband. You know, I live in downtown Bellingham and you've probably seen me freeze a few times during this meeting. And that's because even in our downtown economic core of our, our Bellingham, I still don't have access to high speed internet in ways that are reliable. And if I'm not having access, then how are we, how are we addressing the dire needs of folks who live in our eastern Wacom counties or our Lummi Nation or border communities? So there's a lot of work that needs to be done. I think the state legislature and the federal government have, have and will continue to invest in broadband. And so part of it is just being shovel ready enough at the county level to be able to leverage some of those resources. I do believe we'll need to be working with the city of Bellingham as well. It's sort of my understanding that perhaps our municipal perspectives on broadband have been heavily informed by some of our, our corporate internet providers like Comcast and some of the others. So really thinking about how, how can we, like I said, I think public broadband is really the approach we need to take. And so I've done quite a bit of work with Skagit and seen the successful model that their port, the city of Mount Vernon, the city of Anticortes and some others. I will say I worked in Mount Vernon and I learned that my office back in the day was connected to the city broadband. And I will tell you, I never had any internet issues. It was beautiful. So I want to see that here in Bellingham as well. And so just continuing to work with folks. Work with folks who have that experience, I think will be really informative as we address our policies here in Wacom County.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kaylee. Do you have a hand up? Some, anyone else? Silencio. I, I, I have a question. I guess it's question for clarification, I guess. BP just announced a big upgrade out, out at Cherry Point. Can you tell us a little bit about that and how you think, how you think that'll help us?
Yes, so we have an entire chapter in our climate action plan around industry. And if I recall, I think it, it very much focuses on some of the work around BP. We recognize that a lot of our greenhouse gas emissions here in Wacom County come from our two refineries and, and formerly from Alcoa. And so really addressing our, you know, countywide reduction of greenhouse gases, we absolutely need to be focusing at our biggest sources, which were the refineries. And so I know BP stepped up a few months ago, or maybe my time is warped, with their net zero goals, I believe by 2040. And I thought those were really admirable. And I know they stepped up again recently within the last week or so to further their commitment to that. I know there's been a lot of conversations around expanding biofuels out at BP. I would be interested in learning a little bit more about what that actually looks like. I think my only big concern at this point would just be that we monitor the impacts potentially of vessel traffic if we were to be exporting biofuel from Cherry Point or the impacts of potentially increasing our rail traffic from, from transporting of biofuels. But I really do support BP's effort to green up their energy portfolio, working with BPA and the PUD to ensure we're investing in renewable energy. I, I do believe that we will continue for at least the near future to rely upon fossil fuels. As even my car is a plug and hybrid, still requires a gas tank to get past 50 miles. And I do believe it's something we need to be diligently transitioning away from. I just don't know exactly what that timeline will look like in terms of the electrification of our entire transportation sector and some of our, our buildings. So I'm excited to think about decarbonization and shifting away from the refine, from the use and the reliability on fossil fuels. But I do believe in the near term, as we continue that transition, that we're really focusing on keeping our refineries as clean as possible.
Great. In a gallery? Surprising. I guess they, they, they got their questions all answered in writing those up. So thank you again. We really appreciate it. I think I can speak for everyone that we're super excited about your candidacy and wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep. And then you know how to reach me, feel free to reach out if you do have any other questions. Thank you all so much.